Some obvious changes or things that need to be fixed or we. Overall generally happy. The athletic ability, eligibility, eligibility if I can speak this morning, I know uh Brian has it um. Updated, it's on his, it's the copy's on his computer. It's not like he's got it on email, it's on his hard drive. So he's gonna have to get that and I would like that in the book. But I know they worked, I know the athletic department worked on that. So I was hoping to have a copy of that for you, but that's. Locked in Brian's computer. So.
Do you know why Mr. McCarthy?
I have no idea.
So you'd like that included in here?
I would, that's one of the things I I would like included. Um, I think that would, that would be there. Another thing that I would like included. As well is just an overall, like the grading, I don't think the grading scale. I don't think I put that in here and it's one of the things is. Uh, to give like an overview of grades on what is an A, B, C, D, E and F. And then also to just explain that it's, you know. Do we wanna turn down?
Yeah, did you guys, I thought I heard somebody say that's too cold.
Uh, room fifty-one, it's a little chilly, but we're, we're comfy in here. Put an overview of, of the grading. That it's at least, you know, forty percent one marking period, forty percent another marking period and twenty percent uh is the semester. But how teachers kind of come up with that is within, it's different, so within the departments. You know what I mean, like social studies puts a, when they come up with their forty percent for a marking period grade, they, they have citizenship a little higher. Cause it's something that they value.
Do they have a syllabus for each class?
Well, each class has a syllabus, that's what I'm saying, and to put that in a handbook is gonna be too. Yeah, it's, it's right, it's, it's ridiculous, but what I would like to put in there is the overall. Like grading scale and just that people know that the policy is, you know, forty percent marking period, forty percent. Second marking period and twenty percent is a semester and that it's the. You know, it's the semester grades that, that count towards credit.
By Friday?
Yes, by Friday.
Yeah, cause we have to have that in the board's hands by Friday.
Not a problem.
Okay, so you're gonna take care of that, right? What about the athletic eligibility?
I'll, 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 Brian's gonna have to, I'll keep harping on Brian.
Okay, let him know that if it's not in the hands by Friday that.
It doesn't go in.
Well, it's not that it doesn't go in, it's just we've got the board scheduled to be, to approve this.
Can, can you send an email?
I'll send it an email, sure, yeah, yeah, I could do that, not a problem.
Well, he, he even gave me like his, his uh, he tried giving me like uh his login for his computer. I don't know where it is for him, I don't know where this.
That, that's okay, cause you shouldn't really be telling me if you're violating security procedures.
Would he have, would he be the only one to have the document?
Al? Ah, that's a good question, I think honestly he was, he was taking it from the notes from the meeting and I think he said he would type it up.
Alright.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Is he gone for a week or?
Um, he's been gone for a little bit, so he'll be, he. I'll try to get, I'll, I'll, if I have to get it by Friday, I'll get it by Friday, that won't be a problem for everyone. But I just wanted to let you know, I want that included as well.
Cause the IT guys would certainly be able to get that if, if it goes to nail.
Right, okay.
Do they have remote login?
They do, they have the ability, yeah.
No, I mean, I mean does Brian have remote login?
If his system's online, that's another thing you can, you'd have to be on.
But he says it's like on his desktop and I.
Oh, but he's not, it's not on the network?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's on the desktop, so, but I couldn't find it on your desktop.
You don't remote log into a desktop, you log into a server and everything is stored on the server?
Well, should be, but you can still remote into the desktop, it's on, so.
If the desktop's attached to the, to the network.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, I know I wanna put the school calendar dates and then once we get everything approved, put the table of contents. So it all lines up nice and neat.
So you're gonna add the calendar as well?
Yes, I think uh just at least, you know, um, write the dates out.
Sure.
And, and put that in there and make it look nice and neat and, and have everything, you want everything finalized by Friday.
That would be the goal.
Yep. As long as I have everybody's approval on what I'm doing, that will not be a problem. Oh, the other thing, um.
You need to add closed campus, cause Tom brought that up as well.
Yeah, that was, so.
And is that closed campus for everybody? And that, there used to be a time when juniors and seniors got special dispensation.
Yeah, and that's what uh was last year, but that's up to you guys and, you know, I, I mean, that's what I'm saying, like. Make sure everyone's on the same page.
My first thought when, when I, when I was thinking about it was. We're extending the lunch period to a one hour period to be more proficient for getting the students that need help, why open doors to let them leave?
It's an excellent point, um. But he's also said that there's gonna be recreational opportunities in the gym.
Right.
So, do you make that a privilege that, and I don't, to me it's my, my concern personally is, is that when you let students out of this building. You assume a risk associated with them going across the street. Going to the shopping mall across the night, you know, the Kroger, whatever, we, we create the potential for harm. For them, I mean, simply because of their potential negligence.
Look, I'm, I'm gonna say this, I'm, I'm very much academic, academic, academic and, and I think hopefully you'll always hear that, but number one. For me is building administrator's school safety.
Yeah.
And so, anything that's gonna make the school safer, I'm, I'm okay with. So, but I don't wanna be in violation of, of board policies as I write this, so that's not a.
You know, I see, I think the other thing you open yourself up to, especially with an hour long lunch is.
Oh, yeah.
If an open campus is the opportunities for confrontations off the grounds, where we don't have the proper adults to intervene. And I've seen that happen, by the way, seeing back when we had open campus, it wreaked havoc on our local establishments. I think that time where McDonald's has just closed the lobby.
Right.
To students.
Yes.
To everybody.
Two periods, they would, during the school lunch, it was drive-through only.
It would get so bad, Bob, that they would just shut the lobby down to everybody and it was drive-through only.
And that's a great point, the fact that we're going in our lunch does open up the fact for more trouble to happen. Cause now kids are gonna, yeah, so I.
You're going to all this trouble to create these other internal opportunities for them?
That's a great.
I don't think we should create an environment where they're gonna go hang out at McDonald's for an hour.
Yes.
Some of our students have been banned from that place and other places because of their behavior.
It's the first thing that I thought of.
It wreaks havoc on, on our local establishments.
You know.
It's a great idea.
I don't disagree with one iota, I think we've gotten sufficient evidence in the last few months to say that that's just. We close the campus and just be done with it.
Yeah, unless you came up with some criteria where it was a reward for people, for students in the senior class, whether. You know, the honor roll students or they've made the merit roll or something that they get to, once a week.
Potentially in second semester or something, but you know, that's.
Like, like what happened last year during second semester.
Yeah, so we could, we can look into that, but I, I, I agree, I think it's always easier to uh. Especially writing these things and, and making policy to, to say no and then lighten up later.
Well. That's administrative choice.
Yeah.
You, you make, you bring a compelling reason to say this just does not.
We want them taking advantage of these internal opportunities, in my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely. And if they're, if they've got something that they can't find here, then maybe we need to figure out how to get them engaged some other way.
Yes, more find a way to get in here.
You know, going into the gym and burning off some energy may curtail some behavioral problems in the, in the classroom.
Agreed.
But then you deal with the other administrative issues of them coming back late, all that kinda stuff.
Yes.
They don't come back at all, parents are like, where are they?
Yes.
Or they're running around, getting in accidents and who's liable at that point.
Yes.
Running across Dixie Highway to get the Kroger first and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's, that's, that's a great point.
Even though it was a shortened lunch, it was a bad deal, now you're gonna give them an hour of freedom.
Yeah, that, that can be, that can be bad, alright, um.
I think we beat that one, so.
That works, yeah, that, um.
Well, we need to have, you know, discussion, cause there's been some really decent rationale, I think, given here, so. I think your idea with potential for conflict with outside the building.
I've witnessed it personally, going to, going to lunch, grabs up, grab a celery or something from McDonald's and I've witnessed the behavior, it's like. And I've met with Lisa multiple times on other issues and she's like, oh my god, it's, it's just. You get kids that'll get, one kid will probably pop off the dollar menu, next thing you know, four of them are sharing it, they're going back and they just hang out and they just. She's like, okay, you guys gotta go.
Right.
You know, it really does.
The other thing is, is that, just somewhat of an aside. When you've got that kind of environment, it doesn't bode well for the community when you have visitors coming in and they, I mean that. Businesses are there to make money, right?
Right.
So, we want to support the local merchants and the community folks who come in.
I did see John pointed out where you had the no e- external food coming in.
Yes.
I saw that.
Now, and that's another thing, uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that during school hours or period? Cause just on the side here, I personally witnessed students, athletes, walking into this building. With stuff from across the street. Is that okay?
Talking to me, no, it's not okay. And it happens all the time, and again, a lot of that is when, the one time it was allowed, and here's the problem. Is it was allowed. Okay, it was allowed.
Well, you got a new school year coming.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at, is it was allowed, it was allowed for so long that we finally said, hey. It's not gonna be allowed anymore. And, and honestly, the reason it, it got disallowed is Brent, I think his voice finally got heard. As to his concern about outside food. And so, once that finally happened, it became literally an almost impossible thing to enforce. And the best way to enforce it was ha- was Sue out there in the front, you know, but if she wasn't there, then. It became, it became impossible again because there's. We need to reconfigure that security out there, so there is somebody and you can't just come through at will. Now, kids are gonna sneak and do this and that stuff, those things are gonna happen no matter what, we, no matter what we come up with. People are gonna find ways around it, but it's, it's those big nets in place, those big things in place that we put into, you know.
You'll catch them.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm just asking, it seemed as if, alright, that's fine.
But at, at the beginning of the year, it was allowed. It was allowed and it wasn't until, when, well, when it was enforced, it wasn't.
That's true, you're right, it was too late to get your phone, couldn't get your phone around, if there was anything else going on, they couldn't do it.
But even it might have been February before, or even March, when, when it was.
Because it come out at the, at the February board meeting.
I, I think it was, so you're talking March when it finally, hey, no, no outside food in.
It came out about the same time as we, we met to discuss the electronics policy.
It did, that's exactly right.
You mentioned somebody's concern about outside food, what was that?
Uh, Brent, Officer Green, you know, if you're bringing in outside food, you don't know what, what to bring, especially when you're talking about pops. Or things like that, you don't know what people are bringing in.
So you're saying the contraband could make it?
Yes, yes.
Much easier.
Yes.
Okay.
So. Yeah, no problem, so that's another thing, then do we, I know I have uh outside food in there, but I don't have it in the discipline matrix. Do we wanna put that, like, I think that would obviously be like class A infraction. But, you know, like number twelve, you know, minimum, throw food away, maximum detention. Would you want me to put that in the?
You think it belongs in there?
That's why, that's why we're here.
It's an administrative call, I would think, but.
Well, I think it, then it's also.
I think they need to know it's an infraction somewhere, where, where you think it's whether A, B or whatever. I would trust your judgment, but I agree with you that it needs to be listed as an infraction.
Let's, let's list it then, and I, I do think it is, it is a minimum infraction to, we're, just like when uh. If you notice like on the matrix where it has uh, oh, littering, you know, warning to custodial duties, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's really your call, and I guess if you could, you know, piggyback it on something else like the littering thing or whatever, make it somewhere.
Yeah, so, like throw food, obviously the minimum is throw food out, you know, the maximum.
Well, I don't know that we should put it in the manual, the, the whole notion of the reason for that.
No, correct.
It is.
Yes.
That, that's a really good thing to be aware of. Cause I'm looking to say, why do you care? If they bring something in from the next door?
Right.
See what I'm saying?
It's, it's a littering.
And here's, that, and it's.
We're trying to be a healthy school.
Well, here's, yeah, that's, and here's my thing is, is all the research says and uh, cause I know this is where it's like. The one argument and where it came from is all the research says that kids do better when they have breakfast and. And I agree and I get that, but we provide breakfast here.
Yeah, there's no reason.
So there's no.
And it's free.
And it's free.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's my, that's my thing, is, right, well, yeah, so that's, that's my point with it is, you're absolutely right. I know what the research says, but we do provide it.
Students have two choices. They can come here and we'll feed them, or they can go someplace else, but they need to be here on time. So it's, it's an accountability issue for the students, right?
I, I think, like you said earlier, it would make it so much easier to, to staff that first office with somebody and have the door right there and. You know, if they have food, they don't, the next door doesn't get open.
They don't, yeah, that's, that's my point, completely.
Are you arguing to go back to like a greeter type scenario?
I wouldn't, it doesn't need to necessarily be a greeter, just take like Pam or one of the secretaries and I would have put them right in that front.
My point to that is that we were, weren't we able to pay for that out of?
It was grant funded.
Grant, grant money because it was security, the intention of it was also security, right?
Yeah, I think.
So if you created that position again, would it, would, would it not impact the general fund and we would accomplish what we need to?
Uh, I think, well, here's, here's the thing, I think a lot of that fund is towards Brent. And towards, so I don't think there is, it's there anymore. In fact, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that that is being spent elsewhere.
Yeah, but he's being funded through at-risk funds.
Thirty-one A, but that's what he's talking about.
Thirty-one A is where the, this money would likely come from.
That's what he's talking about, Title II, I don't think is gonna be.
Well, that's still something that, I mean, how much is it gonna cost to put a new door in, if you reroute everybody through there? And I'll speak, because this has happened, I've come in and I know the rules, you go in the office and you sign in, you get a badge. I've walked in the office and there's nobody there. If there's nobody there, what are people gonna do? They're gonna look in the office and see nobody there.
Or there's kids all over the counter and there's no way the women up there are, they're trying to deal with all these kids that are in the office and they don't see.
But again, we have to do things, you know, better and for cheaper around here, my. Solution or suggestion would just be, take one of the three secretaries and put them in that front office.
Well, that's.
Whether they like it or not. Well, and I, apparently I think they're, you know, they're making construction, which if they do it the other way that Brent was talking about. If they are moving that door back, then what Brian wanted is another door to come in.
Another door to come in from where?
From the school, so it would be his.
Why?
So that way, he doesn't want, cause he doesn't want, he doesn't want the kids, like, here's, here's the door into the office, he wants another door into the office. So that way.
Through that glass wall?
Yes.
Why?
You're talking.
So that way when the kids, so the kids from the school don't have to go through that, that buzzer thing.
Oh, they don't have to be buzzed in?
Right. See, here, you wanna go walk in and.
And we can do a little, maybe after the meeting, we can do that.
But that's, that is, like I said.
So you're talking adding a door between the office door that's existing and Brian's door.
Moving it back, that is correct, yeah.
But there's still gonna have to be buzzed in on the outside, right?
Uh, yes, there, but you can, that's why to me, everything was fine the way it was, just put somebody in the front.
The door is pre-existing, the office is there, the room is there.
The buzz is right there, I, again, but I think it became, uh. You know, nobody wanted, but sometimes, look, it's for the safety of the school, you're, you're going there. But, I mean, it is what it is, so.
Does Brent have an office?
Yes.
I was gonna say, that'd be a perfect spot for Brent, but then, then again, Brent's not always in there either, he's not always at this school.
No, I, I get that, but it would be, just knowing that that's where his office is would be.
Pretty big deterrent.
Yes.
Well, yeah, even if they move it this other way, and honestly, if they move it this other way, would be totally fine, he wants an office. Preferably, uh, office with a window, so he can see things coming, I remember, that's the one concern he had about. That front office is there's no window to see anything. So, but, yeah.
Probably cheaper for camera.
I was gonna say, how hard would it be to throw a monitor in there, then you could see every door? You know, a split screen monitor would.
Yeah, put Brent at that one office.
Every, every outside door, right, right on his desk.
It'd be cheaper to put in some decent quality external cameras.
Are there external cameras already existing?
If they didn't use the door back to what they're doing, that would be, look, that would be a good thing. And then, but it's just again, if, and I think Brent said they have the call, he's got the, the funds for that. I remember him, him saying that, so obviously they're doing it, cause you see, so. But, back to, and I think I'll show you, we can show you all that and I think there's some, some good suggestions and again. Uh, I am not the uh, uh, the voice around here that, so those, those things have to be, have to be made, um.
You have a very strong voice.
Uh, so anyway, we'll uh, as we go through. Is there any other problems you guys see or anything like that, we're in, you know, that we're not okay with?
What's your plan to handle the whole badge issue, that was my other thing, the ID issue?
Yeah, in fact, um.
I know it's in there, but how are you gonna enforce that?
Well, here's.
How do you guys do that?
Here's the thing, as, as going with IDs, and, and we've talked about this, going, we can't have the ID. Policy lead to suspensions, well, we can't, we have too many things, there's too many problems, we're, we're not gonna. That's, this, the state isn't very happy about that, I'm trying to find exactly.
So if I, if I'm a kid and I, and I inadvertently, cause I'm a kid.
Yep.
I forget things, as an adult, I, I leave my badge out.
Exactly.
And my, I'm back again to get another badge made and you charge a dollar?
Then we were running thousands of dollars for doing that.
Yes.
I, I, I don't think we, I, I believe the way I had it written, why can't I find it in here now?
I'm looking for it as well.
I thought everything was, I think the way I had it written is that it wasn't gonna be punitive.
Right.
It's, it's more like if you have it, you get rewards as in, like if you don't have your ID, you cannot go to the bathroom. Don't ask, you know. Uh, but that's gonna, then, then bring your ID, I'm, I mean, we have to, we have to have some kinda things, and those are the things that we need to discuss about here.
There is some.
Dress code.
Yeah, I think you gotta, you gotta, you gotta be careful with that one, but, you know, it could be tied to. The cellphone privilege. You know, you don't have your badge, you lose your cellphone privileges to have on campus.
IDs must be worn on a student person at all times during the school day and be able to be produced upon request. Each student will receive a free ID and lanyard clip at the beginning of the school year, replacement ID costs five dollars in lanyards. Uh, if a student does not have his or her ID, replacement ID will be made at the student and will participate in intervention. Uh, right, students who deface an ID chewing, I think, you're right, I did put it in there very vague. Um, I do remember this now, I did leave it in there pretty vague because of that, cause I don't want it to lead. To suspensions and we can't have it lead to suspensions, and I think I had uh it in there for like bathroom policies, you. We need to have the idea of.
So what, one of my, one of the things, reasons I bring that up is, the one place where I've heard routinely. With complaints or issues with kids that have IDs, it's the lunch.
Yes.
It, it seems to be a really big deal for that.
Yep.
Because getting the kids through line and keeping the line moving and everything.
Yep.
Apparently they just scam the card, the ID and. And so, when the kid doesn't have that, it kind of causes some problems, so.
Well, here's the thing, and I'm, and this is, I'm, I'm looking for solutions and, and certainly ideas, is I don't know if I have a. Certainly a skeleton key or an answer for the whole ID situation on what we wanna do. I know for a fact, we can't have IDs leading to, to suspensions and, and. Detention, we'll, we'll never be able to keep up with that.
You, you said that you're gonna have the reward piece during lunch hour for those kids who.
Right.
Don't need to have, or don't need, whatever.
Right.
And, and maybe they don't, they can't do the reward kinda thing like the gym or something like that if they don't have their ID.
So, so if you don't have your ID, you can't get into the gym, but you're saying. For me and as we move forward with this handbook, don't put anything in there really about, for sure, no ID. No potty, because if there is an emergency, we can't, we don't wanna, okay, can't refuse, so, and same thing with lunch, we can't, we can't. You know, not feed a kid.
Right.
But do they get their lunch and they go to the detention room and they don't do anything else, and how do you, you know?
Again, I think we'll be, I, I kinda like the idea of, you don't have your ID, that's gonna.
Maybe for habitual offender, something like that, but.
Actually, I think I mentioned this to you, I'd really like to see us at some point in time when we can afford the technology for kids to swipe in the building. Swipe in the classrooms, then you've got automatically, you've got your attendance issue dealt with, you know exactly when they swiped in.
Yep.
There's no argument about you were two minutes late, it's, it's pretty black and white.
Right.
But for now.
That would be pretty cool.
Naturally, and actually, you know, they don't even, I mean, the proximity readers today, all you have to do is be within a couple of feet.
Yeah, right.
And it'll read the badge, they, they wouldn't even have to swipe, you would know when they're in and out of the building, yeah, I mean, the technology certainly is there.
I'd like to check for my equipment.
We, we would like to maybe suggest that from a technology standpoint, that would be a direction we'd like to go. Because if you think about it, in the event of an emergency, you've gotta know all the students that are in the building, right, and where they're at, right? That would really help from an automation standpoint, tell you where every student is at the time that something where, if you have going to lockdown or, you know, whatever the case may be. So from directional standpoint, you know, we could. I don't know when we'd be able to afford that.
Right, no, and that's, yeah, and that's, and that's the thing, I just kinda wrote down here in my notes is, you know, look at automated IDs in the future. I don't think, obviously, it's not gonna happen here as we start the school year in the fall, so we've gotta come up with.
You just have to imagine as best you can.
Right. That is the reality of it, and so I guess that's the question is, how much chasing do we wanna do for IDs, because I've seen. Previous administrations chase and chase and it's, it's a, it's the same thing, by the way, with the tardy policy. You're, you're, the best, the best tardy policy is when, what Leclerc did and, you know, it's, it's. You know, and I, he always used the analogy, um, is there a marijuana problem in Ann Arbor? No, there's not, it's a twenty-five dollar fine, they don't have a marijuana problem in Ann Arbor, cause they don't, you know. They don't pursue it, and it's the same thing with, with tardies is, we've gotta give, what I would do is, it's our job to clear the halls. And then if kids are tardy, they've gotta, teachers have to then, you know, whatever consequence they come up with in the classroom. You know what I mean, like if that teacher then, hey, you're staying with lunch detention with me. You know, or you're staying, uh, you know, a minute or so, whatever it is that, that those, what works for those teachers. You know, like in, um, one of the best teachers I ever worked with, Jason Kowalski, you know how many detentions he wrote in his, his career?
You said none.
None, not one, I think he turned out pretty good as a teacher, you know, he just gotta. But again, it's, you know, then other people like Mynotsky, it's, you know, you gotta set time and, and that works for her, so.
Well, we need to treat students from the standpoint that school does their job.
Yes.
Expect them to be where they're supposed to be, ready to learn, right?
Yes.
And that, we really need to set, I believe, the landscape to say, this is our expectation of you. And to deal with the one offs as just that. Cause I think, you know, a vast majority of what we do here is to deal with the exception not.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
I think that if we were to say that.
It's a great example of last year, but it's not the exception.
But, the vast majority of students will read this and adhere to it. So you got what, a five percent population of that, I don't know if that's even representative, but. You know, population of students that you've gotta deal with through this, this vehicle, right, and that's. End of the day is what do you want to administer? I'm with you, I, I think we spend. More energy on things that have a little value from a student standpoint.
Yes.
And that we really need to redeal this thing to say, you know. Chasing some of this stuff just isn't worth, it, it doesn't provide value to the students.
Paying, it takes resources.
Yes.
And so, wasting your time, I don't mean that.
What are you looking at?
It is not the best use of your.
Right, I agree.
So we're gonna make sure that what have we invested in, just for the benefit, positive benefit for our students.
Agreed.
How you do that, how you run the building.
Yes. Alright.
That's your bailiwick as far as I'm concerned.
Alright, I'm, I'm feeling good then about things, so, um.
How you deal with the, the, the ID thing? I just think students need to understand that it's important that they can be identified as a student, because if you've got somebody coming in off the street. Who looks just like our students, you, you need to have a means by which to differentiate.
Right.
Guests versus students.
The other thing too, um, to let you guys in on as far as tardies, and what we did decide. Is that we're gonna do three tardies equal an absence though, and so that is, that is kind of our way. In the office to, um, deal with it as well, and then. Once you get ten unexcused absences, then your grade will be lowered. Uh, last year, there was no. In years past, there was always, uh, if you had so many absences, you, you automatically failed. And I don't think that, you know, with the kid or in the grade, a kid or in the grade. But there also needs to be, um, like I can think of a student right off the top of my head, who missed so many days. Why did that student miss so many days? Cause they were allowed to, you know, and so you have to, again, find that balancing act. And so, um, looking around at other schools, like, um, uh, Birch Run allows their kids to miss. Twenty-one days during their, their trimesters. Um, it's above, actually, it's more than that, cause I think it's above seven, so it's, it's twenty-four. Uh, we decided.
Ask you a question.
Yeah.
If a student isn't in class and still has the ability to pass that class.
Yeah.
Does that communicate?
Well, it, here's the thing, very few of those kids do pass.
Okay, so.
That's, that's absolutely, like, I can say this in, in my classroom, you know, ninety, ninety percent of. Of the kids that did fail were, you know, absentees. I never really had a kid that missed that much that. You know, look, you're, you're gonna fail, that's.
Well, my question is, why do you even need to lower the grade? I guess I'm, that, that, if a student is absent that much. And they're still able to pass the class, I don't see that it, I, I see it as being kind of double jeopardy or punitive, but. You know, we know that the studies say the time on task is what allows students to.
That's correct.
Right?
Yes.
So lowering their grade is just kind of, that, that to me is just kinda like, doesn't make a lot of sense.
And I, and I get that.
Okay.
I get that completely, and that's what I'm saying though, uh, that's what went on last year, and it's one of the things I learned is that if you. Don't put those things in there, then you're just gonna have kids that, eh, you know. Aren't gonna show up. If you don't, if you don't put at least some, you know, it's not like we're gonna fail, we're gonna lower kids, a kid's grade. You know?
If they're able to get the grade, how can you lower the grade?
Right, that's, that's why I'm saying, if they can academically perform at a certain level.
That's like being able to test out of.
I get that, so, but, so then if we, I'm, I'm telling you.
Cause the grade can be, the grade can be based on several factors, your behavior in class.
Well, if, if the syllabus is written that way.
Sure.
Then that's a different story.
Right.
If there's a syllabus that they have to follow, and a syllabus states that.
If I'm able to be absent twenty-one days and still get a B or an A or a C. What right does the administration have to take that away from me simply because I wasn't, I probably wasn't in the chair?
I, I, I get that. The number one problem though, that most of our kids, why they fail is because they're, they're not here, and we need to get them here.
I see that being more effective for the super achieving ones, but the super achieving ones aren't gonna be missing those days anyways.
Yes.
You're, you're, you're targeting a discipline. How do we address this differently, I think is kinda what we're gonna.
But I, I think with, to John's point too is, you could, you get it, and where's the, where's that breaking point at?
Right.
How many days of absence before your grade gets affected?
It's on your tenth, and they gotta be unexcused absences.
You could have a kid that's really smart that says, listen, I can blow, uh, nine days of school. Ten days of school, and I can still go in, you know, and I'll just get a B.
Well.
Yeah, cause I'm so smart that I would get an A, but you know what? I'll take a B.
I could be chronic tardy thirty-one times and then go down, under eight too.
I think the key though, if, if you want to do something like that, whether it's effective or not, you wouldn't know until the end of the year.
But, but then if I got, if I'm running my classroom though, I'm not gonna let you get away with that.
Yeah.
But it needs to be in each syllabus, so that every student can't go, well, wait a second, I didn't know that, well, it's in the handbook, well, it's not in Mr. Lang's syllabus. According to here, this is what my kid gets graded on. You, you're, this is what you said he'd be graded on, not this.
Should it be in the handbook that all grades, in your grading system, refer to the teacher's syllabus? Each individual class syllabus.
I think we need to make some sort of statement that says that should the syllabus in the handbook have conflicting information that the handbook provides?
I like that, yeah.
Okay.
Good point.
That way you don't have to know every syllabus in the building.
Right.
But they still have to read and sign off for the syllabus, right?
Uh, I did, I did, um, for my class.
You're certain every teacher has a syllabus, including our gym teacher and.
Um.
Music teacher and.
Am I certain? Nope, um, I'm, is it my expectation? Yeah, but that's, I'm, I'm just being real with you. Cause coming in when I got hired, that's, I don't know if, I, I don't know if everyone has a syllabus, I'm not gonna sit here and say.
Department level syllabus.
Uh, I don't even know, I would say, this is my belief, most teachers. And have syllabus, but are you saying like every, I don't, I can't say that, I don't wanna.
Okay, maybe that's just something we need to address as a part of.
Oh, it's gotta be, it's certainly something that, that has to be addressed with, with teachers. There's, there's no doubt in my mind about that.
It would seem to me that we would at minimum have a department syllabus that says, you know, here is, you know, the English department. Is, you know, how we are gonna conduct, you know, the English department, and the teachers have. Add-on material from the syllabus standpoint that they could add or make an add-on to that, but I would think we want that as a minimum.
Right, cause to my point, like, me being here, or not being here at the beginning of the year, I don't know if teachers were handing out syllabuses. At, you know, my guess, seeing in the class, yeah, most people were, but, you know, it's not like. I gave an order to teachers, hey, everyone needs to have a syllabus. This year, when we have our first staff meeting. That is one, everyone needs to have a syllabus.
Well, that last year changed around so much that I can't imagine.
But that's what I'm getting at, so I can't, that's why I can't sit here and say, so I'm not gonna, again, same thing like with kids as with teachers. If I didn't make that, uh, I'll say a demand or an expectation of your job, I'm not gonna nail you on that.
Right.
You know, but now this year, that's different, and I, trust me, that's one of the things I know.
We had teachers that didn't know they were teaching a class until the day they started teaching a class, so how can they prepare a syllabus?
Yes, and that, by the way, it's totally different this year.
Right.
That is, every teacher knows what they are teaching right now. The only people that don't are the people we have yet to hire for. You know, there's, there's three, three positions out there we need to fill, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we are way better prepared with that, and our numbers are leveled, nobody has, you know, overloads and, and. All that stuff is, this is already such a better year, just because of, of stability.
I would agree with that.
And again, I, I, I know I say this to unblown in the face, I think last year, and I can say this was, the word was survival.
Yeah.
And, and I think this year, the word is implementation.
Yes.
It, it's, it's things, we're gonna fall on our face, and, and people are gonna, that's okay.
Starting off on positive, with positive climates, gonna have positive results.
Yes.
It's just no, it's, it's just in any operation.
Yeah.
Hindsight's twenty twenty.
Right.
But we're getting it right now, so that's what's important.
Right, exactly, and so, so I agree, this year is about, you know, implementation, are, are there gonna be hiccups with our lunch, are there gonna be hiccups with. You know, some of the, the new teachers, but I'm telling you, the new teachers, they're, they're good teachers, but they're, they're gonna be, but let's, let's keep moving forward. And then, I, I think.
There's always a learning curve.
Always a learning curve.
Well. You guys are bringing, you and Mr. McCarthy are bringing some really cool stuff to this building. We're gonna have to have some time to let that settle in.
Right.
For students to understand, you know, that, especially the ones that have been here, you know, this is a different schedule that they're gonna have to march to.
Yep.
We just have to give it some time to.
And I, I'm telling you what we're doing with the, with the PBIS and, and all the, the interventions and, and what is, that is gonna be. That, that's gonna be good. Um, again, that's, that's gonna take time, and as we're going to the conferences about this. You know, they always say it's a three-year, three-year plan, if we give it three years, you know, year one, and, you know, so, we're, we're putting things in and, and stages, and so. You know, we have to give, we have to give certain things time, but saying that, we're. There, we don't have the luxury of, of time as some other districts though either. You know, and so we, there, there does need to be some fast change, and you guys know that. So attendance, back to attendance.
Mm-hmm.
We're okay though with, you know, nine unexcused absence limit, I, I still think there's gotta be. You gotta draw the line somewhere.
My position on that is that you're the building administrator.
Right.
Yeah, I was just like.
You know, you know the line where.
And then again, that's what I'm saying, I wanna, I wanna implement.
Micro-managing.
Yep, but that's, but that's why, why we're here.
You know, you know what's gonna work for you.
I wanna make sure, and again, then we'll, we'll come back next year and say, look, this is, it was garbage, and, and this is. What I wanna change and what I wanna change about it, but, like I said, this year's about implementation, let's, let's try this, this with the tardies, let's try this with the bells. Let's try this with our lunch.
I'd like not to see us do lowering grades if kids can academically perform, that kind of an absence schedule.
I do agree.
We probably oughta ask what's going on in the classroom, right? Not, not penalize students, but more what's, what's going on in the classroom? That he can be absent so much and still be able to pass this class. Now maybe he's, he or she. And maybe they're just not challenged, and we need to find some alternatives to challenge those students.
But, but that's, that's the mentality, I wanna take, we gotta look at it differently, is those kids are very few, and it, and if. The, the hard line is, is more there for kids that, they're, they're gonna miss, and if they know that that's there.
You know what, that's gonna, that's gonna result in their grade.
Right.
I don't.
What, um, is.
If, if the ones that are pulling good grades, are pulling good grades, are probably gonna be in class.
Is part of Brent Green's responsibility truancy?
Uh, yes.
So, if it hits a certain point, is he on the phone to parent or?
He is more, um, he's not the first line in truancy though, he is, he is the extreme. Uh, the, the first line in truancy is, is Gabe Rodriguez.
So, that intervention starts with, with the home?
Yeah, at about after the third, uh, and again, this will be, you know, it's good having him for, for a whole year, after the third attendance, he'll, he'll give a phone. Phone call home, hey, you know, this, and then after the sixth, another one, and then, you know, but that is, that is.
At what point does it go to Brent Green, where now it's Officer Green calling me?
My, my thought is when it gets to, you know, the ninth.
Is that too late for that level of intervention?
But, I mean, it's not like we're not intervening to, for, you know, at the first place, you know, and I don't think we wanna necessarily always just drop the hammer. You know, it's like, it, it doesn't, if we have Gabe, you know, making the calls, the first round, Gabe the second round, and then.
Well, my point is that. Came out with the state truancy, didn't something just change with the state truancy laws?
I don't, I don't know, other, I don't.
My point is that as a parent, getting a call from you, McCarthy, Gabe Rodriguez.
Right, getting a call.
Carol Selby isn't, isn't going to perk my ears up, as hearing, this is, this is Police Officer Brent Green. Uh-oh, that's gonna perk my ears, it's my, my point is, is, is that ninth absence, is that too late? Should it be the seventh?
Okay.
Should Brent Green, and I'm just kicking around, I don't know what's best, but I know as a parent, you're on the phone with me, yeah, okay, yeah, 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 okay.
I'm thinking midpoint.
But a police officer calling me saying, listen, you're, you're reaching that critical point. We gotta get this fixed, folks, how do we do that?
I, I, I just think the, you know, that would be part of Gabe's. Call too is, hey, look, you know, if, if I gotta keep going, it's gonna go to Officer Green, you know?
Could he call as a truancy officer? Cause that might, that might perk your ears up too, if, if Gabe calls and introduces himself as a, a truancy officer.
And he's not.
Well, I just think that.
I mean, he's, he could certainly, I know what you're saying though, like.
Truancy enforcer?
Yes.
I mean, maybe not call him an officer, I mean, I'm an officer.
Right.
I know what you're saying. My title on my, on my paperwork, I'm an officer, so, I mean, I'm not a police officer.
Yeah, no, that's, hey, I'm the truancy enfo, yes, I like that, right.
I just think, I, I just wanna make sure we're not waiting till now we're going, uh-oh, and by the time Brent Green intervenes. Now there's three or four more absences, and now that kid's going to fail.
Right.
Versus having that, a little, a little earlier intervention, and that's point, I know as a parent, that would perk my ears up much quicker than. Getting a call from Gabe Rodriguez, who's.
Well, your points well taken, I think, you know, that. Is the intervention before you hit the, you know, the, the dead point, well, right? Makes sense to me. Do we have policy or do we have anything that there's extenuating circumstances for a student?
For, for attendance and absences? Absolutely, that's in there, and that's, that's, yeah, like if there's. You know, that's why it's unexcused absences, you know, i- i- if you're, and again, but that's the difference though between. Uh, mom writing a sick note, that's, that's not excused, but, you know, Dr. Lang writing a sick note, that's excused. That's legitimate. If you, if you go through that much hassle to actually get a real doctor to write, you know, then you probably. You know, either you know how to play the system, or you legitimately are, are sick, and so let's, you know, kudos to you on that. I, 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 I totally agree with you on that, and, cause we do have, and have had that in the past, and, and again, kids, kids gotta go to court. You know, kids have, have, you know, those things, our kids deal with that kinda stuff, so, that's why, that's why it is nine unexcused absences, and I think even in there. Did I write, like, what a.
I thought I read, uh, what?
Like, yeah.
Will be down for medical or?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
I guess, as I said earlier, this is your building to run, and so I would hope that through the course of the year, you would take some notes as to. What worked well, what needs to be improved, right? And we'll come back again the next, after the next school year is over.
Right.
And say, what are we gonna do to help you run the building better?
And guys, and the, and the way I operate is, i- i- if I've seen something not working, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, come to you guys in November and say, look, I. I got egg on my face, this isn't, this isn't going, and, and the other thing, you know, you, you keep saying it's, it's my building, I, this is our building. You know, and, and I know I, you, the community entrusted me to be in charge of it, but it is, you know, this is our building. So.
Don't disagree, I guess at the end of the day, I hope you understand what we're doing here.
Absolutely.
That's how you wanna.
And, and I think, uh, it's, it's like I told, you know, John the other day, like, when you write a handbook or things like this, you want as many people's eyes on it. And have other people's opinions, cause what am I missing? You know, what am I not seeing? Where, where, what are the other? You know, things that, that need to be, to be heard and, and considered, so, um, it's also difficult to write a. Write a paper like this with, by yourself.
And it's not gonna.
Right, you can't. And, uh, and again, you're not gonna make everyone happy, but I think we can.
I'm really pleased with your change of focus because the, the former. We, we, for so long, it's just been, you do something wrong, you're out of here.
Yes.
And, and that's not the kind of environment we wanna have, we wanna have one that's, you know, academically focused, and you're out of here, it doesn't give time on task.
Yeah.
Well, we have to continue to turn our academics around, or all of a sudden mute.
Right.
Right.
Can't have that.
Yes.
You can't turn it around if the kids aren't here, so.
Yeah, and, and absolutely, and, and, uh, even before our academics, and tied to that academics is our number of suspensions, they do go hand in hand. And, and people don't realize that, they, you know, they think, oh, oh, get, get the kid out of here, well, that kid's gotta come back and take the test eventually. So do you, do you want him out of here, and do you want him, you don't care learning, you know, and if they're that much of a disturbance and that much of a problem. Uh, then we need to have interventions in, in place.
Yeah, you don't send them home so they can watch TV on the couch, put.
That, right.
Put them in a different environment where they're still learning something.
Yes, absolutely.
And where it hurts.
Yes.
And what?
Hit them where it hurts. Cause a lot of the kids want to be suspended, because it's.
They don't wanna be in class.
They don't wanna be in class.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's, it's easier for them. You know, it's, it's easier for them, yes, so, you get to stay home and.
Back when I was in school, you used to get to paddle if you were out of line.
Uh, yeah.
That wasn't that long ago.
If it wasn't high school, you got Mr. Beva. They played a linebacker for, I wanna say UCLA, guy had like twenty-one inch biceps. And, look at you and say, oh, go, which army you wanted in, you're getting punched, it's just a matter of which army you wanted in. But that man literally could pick you up out of the back of your, and he was just as towering, he'd fill that door with, huge, huge man. You did not, he was in charge, he was the vice principal in charge of discipline, you did not wanna get sent to Beva's office. Cause he literally could pick you right up off the ground and say, you're gonna knock it off, right? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Alright.
He was, he was just, he, he did not wanna, he did not wanna. Oh, yeah, yeah, you couldn't, you can't.
Can't even do that as a parent.
No, no.
So when, um, if we're all good, I will, uh, make these adjustments, um, I'll get it to you guys Friday. By the late Friday, perhaps, or just, you know, and then, uh, you'll have it over the weekend. And then Monday, want me to come to the board and, I mean, I, do you want, you want me to send it to every board member?
Well, get it to Rob, and she'll send it as a part of the board packet.
Okay, okay.
Her as to what she needs.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And that way, that way everybody has it for the weekend.
Is Rob in back?
Yes, okay, she is, so, I'm gonna send this from McCarthy an email to help him, encourage him to get you to the athletic eligibility stuff.
Yeah, and I'll talk, I'll talk to him, I'll talk to him again today.
Just briefly, has that changed a lot?
Yeah, actually it has, what I've heard, um, and just kinda running, just off memory and, and the things, and. Uh, I think you raised it to two point oh.
Okay, so we raised it, we didn't drop it?
No, no, raised to two point oh, um, a lot of it is based on what you did, like, the one marking period. Uh, leads to the next marking period, if you have like three Fs, you're, you're not only, it's, it's actually much stricter.
Great, good, okay, thank you, that's all I need to.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure what, we didn't go the other way.
No, uh, no, it's a, it's a. Yes.
I was there.
Okay.
I, at one time, I think we were at a two-five, I was surprised to hear we were back down to a one-seven. And at one point in time, there was a situation where if you carried a three O, the pay to play would be refunded back.
Right.
But what they, the students actually came up with this, that we had two students be there, okay? The two students said, you know, Mr. McCarthy says, well, that rewards the parents for the student's good behavior. One of the students says, well, then why don't you give them an athletic pass for the next six weeks, or whatever the semester it is. If we get a three L, and that rewards the students.
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting, you guys brought that up.
And that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so, we'll see what comes out of that, so, you're gonna get the grading scale in, you're gonna add the calendar. You're gonna add the bit about closed campus.
Yes.
You're gonna add the bit about no outside food in the building.
Yeah.
You're gonna address the ID things, right?
Yes.
You're also gonna add language that says where the handbook and the syllabus are in conflict, the handbook prevails.
Yes.
Okay. So I think we're set, right?
Okay, I, I do too.
I did see a few alignment typos.
Yeah, and again, I figured, yeah, once, once I, once I, I do that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is this clock set on a system, or is that an individual clock?
This clock right here, that's, the, the one's nine fifty-five, I don't know if you can see the angle.
Well, my point is, as I looked at that, and I looked at my watch and my phone, I thought. If, if that's our school clock, it's wrong, how do we make sure the kids, it's magic, cause the kid goes, wait a second.
Yeah, we got the, we got the atomic, atomic time, yeah, we got the atomic time right there, so. Actually, my.
I've got nine fifty-five.
My, my phone is my tablet, it's two minutes behind my phone, that's weird.
So, anything else to do with this, we will be here Monday, um, in the board session to review this, and you can get it printed.
What time is the board session Monday?
Six.
Okay.
They're always, unless, they're at six, unless there's an exception, that's normally would be. Come out of the previous board meeting, it's a lot of equipment at six, but that's the standard, that's set in the organization.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, I'm gonna talk to Rob right now, but.
Is there anybody that we could talk to about rethinking the layout? Is there anything you, you guys, you guys as board members to discuss that?
To discuss what?
The layout of the entrance, and, you know, it just seems like a lot of money being spent to move doors around.